Good afternoon. This is a public hearing. Today is Monday, May 20th. We are located in the main assembly room of the City-County Building. The purpose of this hearing is to listen to questions and concerns regarding the upcoming budget. I'd like to have a roll call, please. Commissioner Lundey?
Here.
Commissioner Dorrit?
Here.
Commissioner Oster?
Here.
Commissioner Ward?
Here.
Commissioner Schoonmaker?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Beeler?
Here.
Commissioner Daley?
Here.
Commissioner Jay?
Here.
Commissioner Frazier?
Present.
All members are present. Thank you so much. We have two signed up for public forum at this time. The first speaker is Sheriff Spangler. Sheriff, you know the drill. If you'd identify yourself in county or residence.
Tom Spangler, Knox County Sheriff, 400 Main Street.
Welcome.
Thank you. Madam Chairman, Commissioners, first of all, let me say to you all, thank you for your prayers, your thoughts, your cards, your calls. You don't know how much it means to me of what this commission reaching out to me. And I'm a proud man, and it's hard for me to accept those things. But I want to say thank you to you personally, because I know each and every one who reached out in some way or another, and I'm grateful for that. And I'm blessed by it. I just want to say thank you. Also, I want to say thank you to the mayor. I know he's not here today, but again, being a proud person that I am, it's very hard for me to take the acknowledgement that he made during his budget announcement. And I'm very thankful. He's a good friend, and I appreciate that. I know sometimes we have our disagreements, and that's what this is all about. But a good friend, and I want to say thank you, Mayor Glenn Jacobs. So with that being said, I think everybody may know or have some idea of why I'm here. We all have seen where KPD now has raised their starting salaries of $56,000. What we did last year was huge, as the mayor said in his budget proposal and announcement. And I'm grateful. I'm grateful to him. I'm grateful to you all for what you're able to do. Yes, it was the largest pay raise that we have received. But what we did was just catch up. And we can't continue just to catch up. Part of that big raise came from some of the sacrifice that I made, and that was giving up 29 positions, which equates to $1.14 million. It wasn't just that I come to this commission or come to the mayor and said, "I need this kind of money." I made an effort on our part to make sure that we try to find some money as well to make that happen. And that's what I want to try to do today as well. So it's very hard to be able to go back with that. You all have invested in this agency. You invested in these officers. I had a very smart individual tell me, "And you need to continue." And I'm asking you to continue to investing in these officers. What I'm here for today is those post-certified officers. And I know this will probably upset some of the employees within the sheriff's office, but it's the post-certified officers that we're concerned about right now. So you're talking roughly of 400 individuals, 400 officers. And we'll give you the numbers here just in a few, but I want to go over a few things that, just to let you know what we're doing. Again, I talk about just catching up, but we have to be competitive. I understand we're not going to be competitive with, over in Oak Ridge. We're not going to be able to compete against the Highway Patrol, starting out at 65. But we have to be competitive with our sister agency. It's just that simple, because if we keep going back and forth with KPD, they're going to come after our people, we're going to go after theirs. And they're going to look at the salaries. And it's just that simple. It really is. And you heard from the city mayor, Kinkanen, whenever she spoke about, you know, "They deserved it." Yeah, they do. They absolutely do. We know what the job consists of. So do the men and women of the Knox County Sheriff's Office. I feel like whenever we got that big raise, we took two giant steps forward by getting us caught up. And now here we are. Now we're taking five steps back again. And I don't want to have to come to the commission every year asking for this and asking for that. I want to be able to say, "We're good with it. We're happy with what the mayor has proposed for us. We're happy with what the commission is about to approve." It'd be nice if for the next two years, I don't have to come to you and asking you for a raise outside of what the mayor proposes for all Knox County employees. And if that happens, I'd be more than glad to make that happen. For us to get up to 56,000, now we're looking at $4,000 to move that up from 51, some odd change. And I'll have Allison up here if I need to, to give the exact number. But $4,000 difference now. $4,000 of starting salary from our 51, almost 52, to 56,000. Part of that is, obviously, we have this when we have recruits come in. It's a housing issue as well. They're having problems finding a house that they can afford, you know, with that salary as well. And I think that's the same thing as what the city mayor made that comment. Same thing with their guys and gals that are coming in. They have the same issue. And that's tough to be able to tell somebody, or at least when they come into our county and say, "I can't find anything affordable within that salary that I'm making." So they go somewhere else. We can't continue to have that. Kind of give you an idea of where we were last year. We had 190. When I come to this commission, we had 194 vacancies. 194 vacancies. That was up until June of last year. From July 1 until today, we have 34. That's law enforcement and corrections. That's huge. What you all did, what this commission did, helped this agency by bringing people in because of the salary we were able to raise it to. But then we have our city sister agency come in and step up and say, "Oh, we're going to up you." And that's what I'm talking about, that two steps forward and that five steps backwards. We can't continue to do that. I'm hoping that sometime, I hear the mayor, they evidently meet, the two mayors meet every month. I'm hoping that maybe the two mayors and the two top law enforcement officers in the county and the city can get together and say, "What can we do to make this from being competitive against each other? Let's talk about that." That may be something that I'm dreaming. I don't know. Maybe it's something that can't happen, but I think it's something worth looking into. Those vacancies were huge, and I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for the staff that has worked their backsides off to make sure that we get people in here and we get them interviewed. And that's the downside. I think it has helped us tremendously with the mayor council, getting people hired quicker now. They have stepped up and really made it a lot easier on us as far as getting people interviews and getting them through the process, which has made a big difference with us. And I'm grateful for that. And we continue. We still have people in the hopper, so to speak, right now that are being interviewed. We've made conditional offers to people, and so I want to continue making that happen. And again, kudos to you all for making that happen as well, because that's where it comes from. Kind of give you another idea, too. I mentioned to you all last year that we had somewhere around 80 or so people ready to retire. Last year, we had 26 people retire. Right now, currently, and to the end of this year, we have 12 more that are retiring. We can't replace experience. Can't do it. If I can't get people in here now, we struggle to be able to get people trained and then get them out on the street. Because as they go through the academy, and then they go through the 14-week FTO program, you're talking almost four, five months before we ever put that person out on the And it makes it tough. I just lost a patrol captain who just retired this past week. I lost another captain that retired last week as well. Supervision, retiring. It's hard to replace that. I mentioned that we have 400 post-certified officers. Those are the ones that I'm talking about, getting them that starting salary for law enforcement positions, and then getting those caught up as well to make those differences in there. We all know the dangers of this job. It's every day. I don't know of anybody else that has to wear a vest or put a vest on to go to work. And I know I'm being redundant about this, but it's from the heart to be able to tell you that we are a little different. We are different from everybody else, just because of, or at least the men and women are, maybe I'm not, but the men and women that put that uniform on every day, that wear that shield, that put that sidearm on their side. We're expecting them, at any point in time, to make a split-second decision on whether to save their own life or save somebody else's life, to be in a gunfight. We have had more officer-involved shootings in the past year than I can ever imagine. Society has made this job even tougher, even more dangerous. I started in this profession back in 1980. Never saw anything like it, what we're seeing today. Nothing. I knew it was dangerous then. Heck, yeah, if you're having to carry a gun to protect yourself and/or others, they don't come after you as an individual. They come after you because of what's on your sleeve and what's right here. But they're coming after us on a daily basis. These men and women are answering domestic calls on a daily basis. I've mentioned to you all that they go out here and have to answer a call that involves a crash, that maybe a child was killed in that crash. And then the next call they get is a minor fender bender. They have to be able to flip a switch. They're almost like a robot. And we're asking them to take a bullet, to be spit upon, to be assaulted, for the salaries that we pay them. I've always advocated, we pay those more that entertain us than those who protect us. The job is very dangerous. It's different from any other job. I'm not taking away from anybody. There's two positions, there are two professions right now that I deem that should be paid so much more, and that's law enforcement and teachers. But I'm up here. I'm up here asking. I'm up here begging. I'm up here to say that this job to you all is more dangerous than it has ever been. And I apologize. My mouth is dry because of you know what.
Sheriff, if you could wrap this up in the next few minutes, please, sir?
Yes. With that being said, Commissioners, I spent last week in DC with the Officer Memorial Service. And to see the 200-and-some-odd officer's names being read was kind of tough. But I want to introduce somebody to you. I want to introduce Connorina Blakely, Officer Blakely's wife. It's not here to intimidate you. That's not the purpose of it. I want you to see the reality of it. This is somebody who's lost her husband because he was brutally murdered. We can't have that anymore. I failed him because it happened on my watch. I can't have that again. I won't have it again. But I want Connorina, and I want Henny, their five-year-old son, to know that we still care. We will. We will always care. And I'm asking you all to at least maybe consider holding off on passing the budget until maybe that Allison and Chris can get together and see if we can't find some money. We were willing to look at some other things, and if you have any questions, I'll be more than glad to answer them. But I want to thank you for your time, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff. We have one other public speaker that has signed up. Is Hayden Bradfield here? Is Mr. Bradfield here? All right. I don't believe he is. Well, that will conclude our public forum, then. We'll move on to any discussion that any commission members might have of the budget. Commissioner Jay?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Allison, I have a question. Sorry to catch you before you left, but... If you could identify yourself before I ask you a question.
Allison Rogers, Finance Director for the Knox County Sheriff's Office.
Sheriff Spangler, if I understand correctly, is asked for the 400 officers that are post-certified to move the starting salary, or the equivalent step thereof, from $51,000 to $56,000 to match the sister agency. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the entry-level salary for patrols is right at $52,000 for the sheriff's office, and KPD has proposed a $56,000 entry-level salary.
Okay, $52,000.
Yes, so it's $4,000.
What does that translate to in dollars?
Salary dollars.
Salary dollars plus carrying costs, plus everything else that goes into that?
Well, the salary cost will be right at $1.2 million. That is after you do the 400 certified officers. This does not include civilians. It does not include corrections officers. It is post-certified officers. That's 400 officers. It's $4,000, so it's right at $1,006,000. I took off what Chris had already budgeted for a 2% two-step raise, so that gets it down to $1.2 salary dollar only. Then we would need to discuss benefits.
You don't have the numbers on those yet?
For benefits, it's going to be $200,000 in addition, plus we would have to look at the UOP numbers separately.
But you don't have that today?
I don't have it right, no. But you can add at least another $200,000 onto that for social security and then retirement.
Okay. So you're essentially asking for almost 1.3?
Right, probably closer to 1.4.
1.4, okay. Oh, that's right, because you took out the budget.
The two steps that have already been budgeted.
Any other relative dollars that need to be considered?
No. Chris and I have discussed a few things on revenue. We're going to redo our Marshals contract. Blount County is charging $100 for their Marshals inmates. We're charging 83 right now, so we're getting ready to try to up the cost to $100 a day for Marshals and ICE, which would hopefully, possibly bring in anywhere from a quarter to a half a million more in revenue.
That would help.
And are there any other, either revenue sources or cuts or anything? I mean, is there anything else? You're essentially asking for a budget amendment.
Mm-hmm.
Is there anything else to consider in that?
As far as our operations, there's no cuts that we can make. I mean, we actually need more money than what's budgeted. We try to make that up by possibly some designations from this year to next year for those operations. I've mentioned a couple of things with Chris as far as capital goes, but of course, those dollars are in a different account. So we're trying to come up with every possible solution there could be.
Is there still the discussion on the table about booking fees?
We're open to look at...
With other agencies?
Any other revenue sources that we can, yes, get. So yes, anything would be open, including pre-tro fees also.
Thank you very much. Mr. Caldwell? What page in our budget would I find? I'm just sort of picking through it, but where our undesignated fund balance levels are right now?
It's on page 33 is the general. Well, it just shows you what we have proposed to use this year. So I believe our designated, I think our fund balance in the general fund's about 81. But I would let you know that this is a recurring expense, and the fund balance policy does not allow a recurring expense to be used for fund balance. Thank you.
Finished? Thank you. Thank you. Commissioners, are there any other questions? Commissioner Schoonmaker? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. What did we have to contribute this year, or excuse me, for this next budget year for the sheriff's retirement plan?
The contribution to UOP from '24 to '25 went from about $10.5 billion to $11.9, so about a $1.4 million increase, and is slated to go to about $13,4 in '26.
From 11...
So...
From 10? What'd you say?
From 10, 4 in current year to 11, 9 in FY '25, so the budget you all are voting on. There's an appropriation there for 11, 9. And then the preliminary number in '26 is 13, 4.
Okay. And the other thing that's totally, well, a first-time expense in the budget this year was a $2.3 million for our ambulance provider?
Yeah, approximately $2.3 was what we budgeted there.
Okay. Does that increase every year going forward?
There is a small increase every year for dispatch. We're phasing that into 911, but it'll go up like, I think, $300,000 next year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Ward?
Thank you, Chair. I've got three months left. Nice thing about having three months left, you can kind of say what you want, and you don't have to worry about getting reelected. So I'm going to say what I want. This is indirected or a political statement. This is just, I think, the reality that we're going to be facing going forward. We spent the last week talking about some of the budget challenges that we're going to be facing going forward when it comes to debt services, which is going to be a real challenge in the next three years upcoming. Inflation this year is going to be around 3%, 4%. Inflation in the last couple of years was 7%, 8%, 9%. The economist in me, the simple fact is 2% is actually a decrease in pay, because it doesn't keep up with inflationary rate. And these are the kind of things that the commission after me is going to have to consider, how we're going to face these challenges over the next three years, basically, because that's our timeline. We've got three years to make a decision on how we're going to do this. Already this year, the budget is tight. I only project the budget being tighter as things go forward and inflation stays up. There's no expert out there that's going to say that it's going to come down anytime soon. So there's going to be some challenging roads ahead. The sheriff knows I love him. I don't think this is good enough. I think we should do better. Unfortunately, I don't know where the money is to do better at this point. We haven't put a revenue system in place where we can sustain the infrastructure that we want to build. I was breaking Jim Snowden's chops today, asking him, "Why can't we get five lanes all the way to the high school?" It's just not enough money to get five lanes to the high school in Hardin Valley to Pallasipi. We just don't have the money yet. We can get to Chick-fil-A, which is a start, but not to the high school yet. So these are a lot of challenges we're going to face coming up. And to make sure we're not trying to hide those facts from the public, that I think all the commissioners up here are very much aware. I think the staff is very much aware. I think everybody's trying to do the best they can. I personally don't think it's enough. I don't think it's ever going to be enough, honestly. So there's always going to be more needs and more wants. But I do think there's a lot of tough decisions coming down the road, and a lot of hard conversations we're going to really have. And we're going to really need to have to decide what's important to us as a community, and what's important to us as a county, and what sacrifices we're going to have to make, and what changes we're going to have to make to get us to where we want to get to. These aren't going to be easy for anybody involved, for any department, for any elected official, for any citizen. There's going to be some tough times where we have to figure this stuff out. So since I can speak freely, I just want to put that on the record, that we have to have a really honest conversation the next three years about how we want to handle things going forward in this county.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? Director Caldwell? I know in the past that we've looked at some potential options like a periodic bonus or percentage of pay, or something like that to come through. And I know, at least my understanding is, that with many of our uniformed officers, that the reluctance and all that has been bypassing the retirement. I know to having, sitting on retirement with several of us, that is, quite honestly, it's a backbreaker. I don't in any way imply that it isn't something that we need to do, and we want to do, and will continue to do, but it is a huge expense that continues to balloon, and it's going to for several years. Is there a dime? Is there a penny anywhere, even if we handle it more as a one-time payment, instead of including it in benefits, so that we could continue to maintain some control over the retirement fund?
Yes, so, you know, that's a good question. So ultimately, always better for us are bonuses versus a reoccurring expense increase, right? So, you know, as we prepared this budget, you know, one thing that we've been very consistently saying, right, is there's not a lot of revenue growth, right? And I sent you all an email this morning about sales type...
It's, and I sent you all an email this morning about sales tax. And sales tax for what we call March collections was relatively flat. I think, I think in the proposed budget for '25, from a revenue standpoint, it's pretty stretched, right? I'm not saying that once we get there, that there's not going to be some monies, that some revenues that come in more than, than we budgeted. I think it's gonna be fairly close, though. And then you look and you see that in our budget for the general fund, which is where like these salaries would come from, right? We already have an appropriation from fund balance of $3.5 million and use of designations of $2 million. But before we even get started, right?
Correct.
And so, you know, those, I guess, those are kind of the pain points, right? You, revenue budget is fairly tight. Expenses, as Commissioner Ward said, with inflation can just continue to grow, right? So we have contractual increases and things like that. But, I mean, with that being said, there is growth. I think it's just not, it's natural growth and it's not the level of growth that we have saw the last two or three years to where it was just more than expected, right? And I think, you know, we went over Monday at Finance Committee about how we were doing year to year, right? And if you look, our revenues over expenses in '24 compared to '23, that's right, have been cut in half, right? So meaning less money to end the year. And I keep on saying how that's going to continue to shrink. So that's just the first step of that shrinking. Allison, I think if you, if you ask the mayor, if you ask you all, if you ask me, of course, we would love to give raises to everybody. That's, it's not our goal is to say, you know, no raises. We prefer to do that and try to do what we can. But our charge is to, is to bring a budget that is balanced and living within our means in this current environment, and that's what is before you. Is there a chance as we end this fiscal year that there could be some monies for some adjustments? Yeah, it's possible. We'll see. I mean, so one thing that is coming about too is we've done really well in relationship to our self-insured health insurance fund. And Senior Director Candler brought to the mayor an opportunity to maybe do a rebate to employees as well as some premium holidays. I think we're gonna be able to do that and that is something that isn't in here, that wasn't anticipated, but can be done to help and to alleviate some of that. But as a whole, if you said to me, Chris, can you look in the general fund and find $1.5 million to add to revenues to make this happen? I would say unfortunately, no.
Okay. Can you give a little more detail? Because I believe this, what you had shared about the health care, that also, that includes also any officers that are also-
That would be true. And so, anyone who is eligible for health insurance, which meaning, which basically means you work 30 hours a week. And so even if you don't take it, you would be eligible for the health insurance rebate, which we think we will pay out towards the end of June. It'd probably be like $500 per plan member or potential plan member. And then we are exploring the idea of some premium holidays towards the end of the calendar year. And all that, just so you know, all that comes out of the health insurance fund, right? So I know that it's accounting lingo, but all monies related to health insurance goes into a separate fund. And because of our employees and because of the work of our benefits team, we have enabled, been able to generate some reserves there and we wanted to be able to give those back.
So to be clear, I hear you saying that anyone that would qualify for the insurance, whether they're taking it or not at this point in time can look forward to a $500 bonus?
Correct. If you're eligible, which is basically you work 30 hours a week or more.
Correct, correct. And then the health premium holiday, so to speak, what is the average amount? And I know this is very, but say, a family plan that our, all of our employees pay for a month of health insurance?
You know-
Stephanie, you've got a second?
She can give you the average. I know like most employees are on option two and that'll range from single to family. So it can vary.
And I do understand there's a top and a bottom, but just, I'm trying to get an idea of anywhere that we're trying to give back to our folks.
Hi, Stephanie Candler, Senior Director of HR and Benefits, Knox County. I'm sorry, I was in discussion with my colleague and missed the actual question.
That's all right. I was asking Chris, because you all had shared with me the excitement of potentially a premium holiday?
Yes.
What is the overall average that an employee pays per month for their health insurance? I know whether it's single family, but is there a-
It varies. So we directly know the cost to the county. It depends on what option they're on. If they're on option one, it's only about $300 and something dollars per employee per month. And then if they're option two or option P, it's around a thousand dollars, a little over a thousand dollars per employee per month. And the employee cost of all of their medical and all of their insurance on the health plan side is about 20%. So the county pays 80, they pay 20, and that's even in the cost sharing. Right now, we're actually paying about 93% of pharmacy just because the costs went up, but we haven't increased premiums.
All right.
So their out-of-pocket cost is just that whatever premium they pay and then 20% of their cost sharing for the claims otherwise.
All right. So is it fair to say that if they're taking advantage of the health insurance premiums that are offered, that there is the potential of several hundreds of dollars that they will not have to pay-
Correct.
-toward the end of the year?
Oh, yeah, yeah. Especially if you're on a family plan, like on option P. I think their cost, I'd have to get it in front of me, but it's around $300 per paid period.
Okay. So 600 a month?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, thank you. I'm just trying to look for any little bit of good that might, you know, might be out there that we're giving back.
Yes.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This question is for the co-chiefs of staffs on behalf of the mayor in his absence. Is the mayor aware of this ask? And if so, what was the timeframe? Has there been a discussion?
Yeah, I believe, I know that the sheriff spoke to the mayor today. And so they spoke. And I think, you know, what the mayor would say is he respects what the sheriff is asking for and why he would love to help. The proposed budget that's before you is fiscally responsible and is the right approach.
Commissioner Chang?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Rogers? Sorry, make you do the jog back and forth, but some more questions. Is it still, last time, several years ago, we talked about the cost, the average cost to recruit, retain, or recruit onboard, train and get an officer sort of in the pipeline. And it, I think it was about $100,000. Was that, is that still kind of holding true? I know it's a little more, a little less depending on position, but is that pretty accurate?
That is the last figure that I've heard, yes.
So, I mean, we're essentially talking about, I mean, I know we're moving everybody that's up, but we're talking, the sheriff talked about the vacancies. In one year, when this commission approved the increase, we reduced our vacancies by 82% in a year, in just under a year. Pretty significant. Because it's just not a lot of, I know, I know it's a lot of money, but it's just not a lot of money when you think about the big picture. And I don't think it's an unreasonable request. We're talking about $1.6 million on a million .082 budget. It's like .15% increase. And the value of that in the retention and recruitment and the ability to bring on more officers is, I mean, that's 16 people in a swing, either to retain them or recruit them. And we know the needs are right there. My question, okay, that's my question for you, Ms. Rogers. Thank you. Mr. Caldwell, what happens that elected, independently elected officials have an opportunity to use a legal tool, which is a salary suit? If we pass X and they feel like in order to do their mission or to do their job, they need Y, and that's not awarded, they have the ability to go to court and say, I need this to be able to do my job as a constitutional officer? What happens if a judge says, yeah, this doesn't seem unreasonable and awards it? Where would we get that from? If a judge said, we're gonna add 1.6, I'm gonna award you $1.6 million? Or I don't know exactly the mechanism in which it would come down, but let's say that the sheriff was successful in saying, I need this. Where would we get it? What would we do?
It's a great question. You know, what you're thinking about is you're dealing with recurring expenses here, right? And so, and while easily we can sit and say, listen, we've got $85 million in the bank. Why wouldn't we use that? We also have to understand from our policy and best practice that you should never use one-time dollars for recurring expenses. It can, it can help you for a period of time, but it just doesn't get you there all the way. And so I think we would look for any type of revenue source, that would be there. You know, Allison had mentioned that, you know, if we get the federal marshal amount increased, then that can, that can account for some of that. I mean, there are some things like that that can offset some of those expenses. But until they're there, they're not, you know, they're not a recurring revenue source. The judge is never going to dictate where you pay this from. So they're just gonna say, hey, county commissioner, hey, mayor-
They're just gonna say, pay it. I know, that's the question is so-
It's what they're gonna say, right? They're not gonna care. What we're gonna be left with, though, is how do we absorb this recurring expense, right, in our budget? And we talked about this during our budget hearings. 2% raise, that begins in January, costs $1.3 million. But we're already starting out 1.3 in the hole next year, right? Because we didn't budget for the hole, 2.6 for that 2%. So you're starting off in the hole there. We already talked about the increase in UOP, which is 1.6 for next year. So you're $3 million in the hole next year before you even do anything, right? Before you even start preparing a budget. Those two things tell you you're in the hole, $3 million before you start. And I'm sure there's more and she would tell me, but. So that's kind of the things I look at. And I agree with you, on the grand scheme of things, you look at that number and you say, that don't seem like a big number. But then you think about the reality of building that in year over year. It gets tough. And so that's the challenging part.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't, I understand the challenge. The challenge is we don't have enough revenue to warrant the expenses that are needed to support a growing county, much less, you know, individual departments. Commissioner Ward's right, and we've all been talking about it for years and we know that's the case. I think, to me, I look at it as, what happens if you don't invest? Do we end up spending more down the road if we don't invest at the right levels? Just like roads, just like schools, just like everything else. The longer you, you know, defer the inevitable, the more expensive it gets. And in this case, with our law enforcement professionals, you're talking about, you know, either losing people. If you lose more people that are eligible for retirement, it's gonna cost you twice as much to backfill that later. If you lose five more recruits because they've gone to a sister agency, then you've gotta spend twice as much time. And everything compounds to a point where you're, that, I mean, this is preventative maintenance in some, in some sense, from a workforce perspective. And so I look at it as not, how can we do it, but how can we not do it? I mean, are we gonna spend $3, $4, $5, $6 million if we don't equip the team that has the highest liability and the highest risk to our county all at the exact same time? I mean, that's, I struggle with this. And I, let me ask you a separate question. Every year, at the end of the year, we balance the books, we sort of share things up. We use designations, we try to use those for sort of one-time capital expenses. But could we not use our designations to also fund the next year of this issue? Yes, it will put us in a more precarious position next year, but, I mean, this is not going away just because we have a flat year, right?
I mean, in theory, yes, you could do that from a designation standpoint. Keep in mind, in this budget, we've already said we're going to use the first $2 million. So that number then increases, right? And then where do we end up the year? I think, you know, designations in reality, we don't think about it this way as a whole. I mean, I think we do, but ultimately, a lot of people don't. They just see, oh, wow, here's some money, let's, how can we spend it, right? And so, the question is, does it come because there was a one-time revenue source that led to that increase? Two, did it lead, did it come about because some expenses were not expensed through the year? That will be there next year. I think those things you have to examine to see what leads to to a designation to end the year. You know, ultimately, my thought is, is it something that we can look at? Yes. I mean, my thought would be, you know, you could approve this budget as is and then let's end this year, let us see how we do, see where designations get to. Is that something that we want to use designations for going forward? I think that's a conversation that we can have when we talk about designations, which is usually in August.
And our finance, I'm just trying to figure out when our next, if that times out with our finance committee meeting to review it. Next finance committee meeting will be August 19th. So do you feel like we'll have that information by then?
I don't want Perry and Jennifer throwing things at me. Technically, we don't close until the end of August. We always bring designations in August. So we will have a pretty good idea how we will be there, because we'll get sales tax in hopefully the 18th. And will be still accruing- some property tax, but it's usually small by then. So I think by then, we'll have an idea of what designations are going to be, and we can show you like, okay, here's some list of requests that we've received, and how do we prioritize those, and then think about this as well.
Okay. So there is a mechanism in which we could review that and consider this as a budget amendment, as being funded by designations?
Yeah, I think what we would want to do is to see how it ends, where that, where that, what I call, one-time revenue over expense came from, right? So is it something that we have comfort in, or do we not have comfort in, right? And then, what does that allow us, the ability to do?
Okay. Allison, between now and August, I would, I'd like for you all to really nail down the numbers. What is the difference in what's budgeted versus what your, the request is from the sheriff? What do the benefits look like? What is an impact on UOP? And what revenue potentials with additional contracts might offset that? And Sheriff Spangler, I'll, if nothing else, I think we're on the precipice of passing this budget as is, but I'll commit to you that, if I can get that information in advance and work with the finance team, that when we come to our finance committee meeting in August, we'll take that up as a priority, at least I will, and bring it up as a priority discussion, so that we can possibly look at it. If we finish the year stronger, then we could, we could do a budget amendment and retroactive that back to July 1, probably. So I'll make that commitment to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ward?
I think Commissioner Jamie has some great points. The one thing additional that I'd like information on is how much money did we spend last year on recruiting and training, since we did add 80-something officers? Because my fear is, if the city goes up 5 grand on us, all of a sudden, we're back to where we were, where we're losing officers and trying to spend more money again on recruiting and training, and it's just a vicious cycle. I'd rather stay competitive, at least even, so that we can try to retain and be competitive, instead of going back into the hole and spending, if we're spending 100 grand and we did 86 people, if you had to train every single one, that's 8.6 million right there that we just spent, training all these people up. So that's a considerable amount of money, comparison of 1.4. Once you add in everything else, it's probably going to be closer to 1.8, honestly, when you add all the, all the benefits and everything, and all the retirement stuff, but, thank you.
Commissioner Frazier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm sitting here thinking about our county employees, who are only getting 2%. So whatever figures you're looking at, I think it's safe to say, you will absolutely have to include an additional 2% for county employees.
Is that a question or a statement?
It's really a statement. You do this, and I see a riot with county employees. So they, they have to be brought into the conversation and into the calculations. So it's really, it's really just a statement.
We must say noted.
Would you like to respond?
I mean, no, I think we hear that, too. I mean, you know, it's, you know, it's not meant for disrespect, right? But I mean, we hear that, and I think we can look in August and see where we are and what that looks like. I mean, you know, you've heard me say this, countywide, including all officers and everybody in the sheriff's offices, everybody in the building, excluding fee offices who pay for their own, is about 1.3 million per percent, right? And so, just get that number in your mind, so it doesn't take long to get to a big number. I think, I think, I think your point that you made is noted, and I'm glad that you made it, because if I didn't, then I may not get to my vehicle.
Commissioner Schoenmaker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Caldwell, just two quick questions. With the constraints of our current budget, are you and the mayor worried that some of our employees from the engineering department and the parks department could potentially jump ship to go to work for Knox County Schools, since their pay scales are just a little bit different?
It's, I guess, you know, it's, it's always a possibility. I think, you know, I'm not that close to that situation, so I may would ask Jim and Joe themselves, if they've heard anything. I mean, we can ask them. I mean, I don't, it may come as a surprise, but most time, employees don't want to talk to me. And I'm a likable guy. I really get a complex about it, honestly, but Jim and Joe, you got a second? Well, just ask them. That's a good question.
And while they're coming to the podium, the other question I had was, based on the inflation rate that we're currently under, is it possible that next year's designations, when we close the books in June of '25, that there could be $0 for designations?
I think it's very possible. I don't know if it'd be zero, but I think it could be, I mean, if we phrase it, depends on what we do this August, right? And so, I would submit that if we stayed status quo this year, we'll probably be about half of what we were, and then next year, it keeps on going down. But depending on what we do this August, I mean, it's possible, and it also depends, of course, what revenue does, right? So business tax is really good right now, and that's what's helping us in the general fund, is business tax a lot. And property tax collections have been good, but things have slowed. And I sent out something last week that showed like, the property tax is late. So the, they've kind of, you know, kind of slid off, and everything, and that report last week was in the red and pointing down, and it gives you this very false sense of security, right? But current property tax has still been good. We have saw a decrease month over month from the previous year, but our collections through February was really good. But I do think you're going to see a shrinking of designations, no matter what we do.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll speak to it real quick, Commissioner Schoenmaker. I've, I guess, over the last five years or so, I've probably lost, I don't know, six to eight folks, some to the school system, and some to KUB, primarily CDL drivers. You know, once you get a CDL, you're really, you can, you have a lot more options open up. So we have lost a few folks to our peer agencies.
Joseph Mack, Senior Director of Parks and Recreation from Knox County. I've only lost one in the last two and a half years to the schools.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting, and regular commission will begin at 5:10.